All right, we'll call the June 1st, 2020 council briefing session to order. And before we get to the advanced agenda, I just wanted to notify folks in the audience or watching that the governor did extend changes to the Open Public Meetings Act and get the sign off of the top ranking majority and minority members in both the state senate and the house until June 16th, which means that participation from the public is restricted. And I am going to look for a motion to advance our legislative agendas for the next three meetings, today's meeting, June 8th and June 15th, to the 3:30 briefing session. Is there such a motion?
No.
Is there any discussion? Great. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. All right. So that is done and the clerk will make a note of that. And with that, let's turn it over to city administrator, Mr. Krego.
Could I call Rolle first real quick?
Nope. Let's not do that. Let's call Rolle.
Council president begs.
Present.
Council member Burke.
Here.
Council member Cathcart.
The president.
Council member Kinnear.
Present.
Council member Stratton. Council member Wilkerson.
Here.
And council member Mum, are you there? Let the record reflect.
Yes, I'm calling in the pass.
Oh, great.
The password didn't enter me, so I'm by phone.
Perfect. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. With that, I will turn it over to city administrator Krego.
Good afternoon, everyone. This will be the advanced agenda for Monday, 1st of June, 2020. Starting with consent agenda, item one, Clint Harris.
Are you June 1st? You should be June 8th.
You went June 8th. Oh, excuse me. Pardon all.
As I was saying, June 8th, advanced agenda.
First up is reports and contracts. Item number one from the mayor, claims, payments and warrants, payroll and city council minutes. With that, boards and commissions, you have two appointments. And that would bring us to the legislative agenda. And hearing number one is sponsored by council president Beggs and its ordinance imposing an immediate moratorium on the consideration of impact fees and for developments under the emergency.
Okay. And I don't know if your microphone's on, but Mr. McClatchy, can you just give us a little perspective on that, context on that?
Moratorium on impact fees?
Yeah, on the hearing side of it. Are we doing the hearing on the 8th or?
Oh, that would be the, I believe that's the emergency ordinance, and then you have to hold the hearing within a certain period of time after that, within 60 days after that.
Okay. Okay.
To make findings of fact, to determine whether the moratorium will continue or whether it is to be ended at the time that you have your hearing.
Okay. So in terms of what we can expect on the 8th, are we, might have to figure out, I'm not sure how we take public testimony, I guess, in writing, but then we have a discussion about, is that then or is that just the notice of that we're going to set it at a different date?
Let me make sure we're talking about the same thing here.
Yeah.
Hey, council president?
Yes.
Point of clarification, I guess. So is this, is this the hearing then for the moratorium that was approved back, what, two months ago?
I believe so. So that, but.
And can we do that without people in person? I mean, is that partly why we held off, what, more in-person participation?
No, that can be done without, that can be, so that's correct. This is the, this is the hearing that was, that was scheduled out when the council took action on the first moratorium. And at that, at this hearing on the 8th, the council would be adopting findings of fact and conclusions and ultimately determining by its action on the 8th whether the moratorium should continue for an additional period or whether it is to be ended on the 8th. The hearing could take public testimony without people being present. The governor's order also does not prohibit the council from doing this because the new governor's proclamation removed the requirement for necessary and routine matters, restriction on matters that are not necessary in routine. So this is appropriate for that as well.
Okay. All right. But it sounds like we should probably huddle a little outside of this meeting and get council members up to speed of what to expect on the 8th. But the 8th is the actual hearing that we're going to talk with each other about it.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay. Great. And I don't see anything else.
That would be it.
All right. That brings us to today's legislative agenda.
Do you want to approve the advanced agenda?
Yes, I do. I do. Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda for June 8th as currently constituted?
So moves.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the advanced agenda for June 8th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? Advanced agenda is approved. That brings us to the consent agenda for, well, let me ask this real quick. Did we have the appointees for the planning commission? Is that today or not? Next week? Okay.
Next week.
Okay. Wanted to get them working. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. And is there any request to take anything separately from that, those that are listed?
Council president, can we take 12 separate?
Okay. 12, request to take 12 separate? Council member, and when I, there's, actually, there's two options, just to be clear. You can take them separately and we'll vote on them in this section right now, but not all in one group, or secondly, advance it to the legislative agenda. So, council member Cathcart, what's your preference on that?
I guess it's six or, because legislative.
Okay. And then I saw council member Mum and maybe council member Stratton after that. Council member Mum.
Item 6B, take it separately.
And council member Stratton, did you have your hand up too?
I did, but council member Mum took care. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. Then I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda, items less 6B and 12.
And just to be sure, we're not going to review these items, right? They didn't receive a briefing. Did you want these items briefed first before I read them? Or go ahead and read, skip the briefing?
Oh, because, because we didn't have an advance. Yeah, we should go ahead and brief them.
Okay.
Probably.
Do you want to use the call first? Is there something?
Okay. I've gotten some good advice that we will, we do have a proclamation that we can do so that person doesn't have to stay. And I think council member Kinnear has that to read. We can hear you.
Sorry. I, yeah, I had to unmute myself. So, do we have Patty? Is Patty there?
I see Patty waving.
Okay. Hi Patty, thanks for coming down. I'm ready for it. This is City Spokane, office of Spokane City Council proclamation, where on average, nearly 96 Americans per day are killed with guns. There are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year left alone. Moms demand action for gun sense and its local affiliates are amongst the organizations nationwide that recognize the need to ease preventable gun violence. And whereas the City of Spokane is dedicated to making Spokane safer, smarter and healthier, and it is the mission of the Spokane Police Department to demonstrate excellence in policing by preventing and reducing crime, enforcing laws while safeguarding the constitutional rights of all people, and improving the quality of life for our residents and visitors. This includes our commitment to reducing gun violence and pledging to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership. And whereas the Wear Orange campaign was inspired in memory of Adia Pendleton, a 15-year-old Chicago high school student killed by gunfire, whose friends chose to honor her life on her birthday, June 2nd, by wearing orange to represent the flower hunters wear in the woods to protect themselves. And whereas in honor of Adia, the countless survivors injured by shootings each day and whose lives are tragically cut short, this year's official Wear Orange Day are June 2nd through 6th. Now therefore, the Spokane City Council on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, that hereby proclaim June 2nd through 6th, 2020 as Wear Orange Days in Spokane, and urges all citizens to raise awareness about gun violence in honor of the lives of victims and survivors by pledging to wear orange as a symbol of the value of human life. We invite Spokane City Council President to appear and to set his hands in the cause, the seal of the City of Spokane to be announced this first day of June 2020. And I just want to say too that I applied to get the pavilion colored orange for Friday, and I haven't heard back yet. Let's, let's keep our fingers crossed on that. So Patty, do you want to say a thank you?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to thank the members of the council for me allowed, for allowing me to speak and for reading that proclamation and allowing, I think, so much. I live in Spokane. I'm a volunteer with Wear Orange. We do support the Second Amendment, but we encourage all citizens to support local community efforts to prevent this devastating effect of gun violence and honor and values human life. I'm here to remind everyone that for the sixth year since its inception and Spokane's third year in a row issuing the proclamation, the first Friday in June is always Wear Orange Days. We extended a little bit. It gives us time to do a couple of different things, although this year it's all virtual, so we don't have a whole lot going on. But we are also keeping our fingers crossed about the pavilion. Wear Orange Day is a day when we admit that Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. On the first weekend in June, we'll wear honor, or we'll, we'll wear orange to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence. And across the country, buildings will be lit up in orange to remind us of the toll taken by the many forms of gun violence, which includes suicide and crimes like domestic violence and mass shootings. So here in Spokane, we recognize that protecting public safety is the highest responsibility of the city council. We appreciate knowing that you and our law enforcement providers are working to end gun violence with evidence-based solutions. Thank you for your awareness of gun violence and your commitment to public safety, and thanks to everyone who will be wearing orange during the first week of June.
Thanks for participating and for all your work to help keep our community safer. And that's it. And our office will mail you the actual formal proclamation. So thank you and.
Thanks so much for your support. We really appreciate it.
Yeah. All right. With that, we can start briefing on this week's consent agenda.
All right. We'll try this again for Monday, the June 1st. Tonight, the consent agenda, accepting just a couple items here. Item number one, Clint Harris to brief on a purchase of a new street sweeper.
Hi, good afternoon, council president, council. The street department has requested fleet services to purchase one Timco air sweeper for the department using HGAC contract SW04-20 for $332,650.51, including tax from Timco.
Okay. Item number two, a value blank amendment with Wingfoot. David Payne will brief us.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. You have before you, item number two, an amendment to the Wingfoot contract, which is the contract the city uses, police services uses to buy tires for the city vehicles. We need to add $105,000 to that to bring the total contract to $605,000. The reason for this is we realized that we were inadvertently trumping labor costs through this materials contract. We corrected that by enacting a contract with Wingfoot for the labor portion of it. This will have no impact on, it's a wash.
All right.
Okay. Item number three, David Payne also briefing a value blanket increase with Hotsi.
Again, this is a increase in a value blanket. Hotsi is a company that supports the wash station down here at Broadway Fuel Site. The fuel site, as it ages, increases in maintenance costs are required. We need to add additional $25,000 to this contract to bring the total value of the contract to $50,000.
David, I just had a question. Is this, are we going to be looking at that every year or is it getting to the end of its useful life? Or what can you tell us about what the future is going to look like on this expense?
I don't have a direct interest in that, council president. I can tell you that I have a meeting with asset management and the gentleman that manages our fuel and wash station for us on Thursday. We're going to go through this and see what we're looking at as far as names and spots going forward that previously have just kind of been left by the wayside and just flung by our pants.
Okay.
But hopefully, within the next month or so, we'll have a good plan going forward for the next five to 10 years.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four, another value blanket renewal with Hitachi, and Chris Haber will brief.
Good afternoon. Today I'm seeking approval for a value blanket renewal with Hitachi Zosen for purchase of great components. The great system conveys the waste inside the furnace and replacement parts needed to maintain the system. This is a one-year renewal with a cost of $250,000.
Item number five, Chris will also brief us on a contract with Applied Industrial Tech.
This second item is a contract with Applied Industrial for as-needed purchase and installation of a Grizzly feed belt. This belt conveys the ash to the spring building at the Waste Energy Facility. This is a two-year contract in the amount of $120,000 annually.
Item number 6A is a low bid award with Inland Asphalt and Dan Bowler.
I'm 6A. Proposed low bid contract for the 2020 residential grind and overlay with inland asphalt of Spokane for $1.166 million, to which we proposed to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project is an annual project which repaves various residential streets. The low bid from inland asphalt was approximately $9,000 or about 1% under the engineers estimate. Two other bids were received. This project is locally funded.
And is this one particular segment or is this several locations?
It's multiple locations in various parts of town. It was in the briefing paper, but I can certainly send you a copy of an exhibit if you would like.
No, that's fine. Thanks.
Item 6B will be considered separately after, and we can mention that later. Item number seven is Dan also briefing us on a contract with H2E Inc. of Liberty Lake.
So item seven is for the proposed contract with H2E for the electrical design of the Hoffmanwell upgrades, which supplies most of North Spokane. This consultant was selected via a request for qualifications process. The proposed engineering agreement is for approximately $65,000 plus 10% administrative reserve.
Item number eight, Mike Cannon with the contract renewal with Inland Environmental. Mike, you need to unmute.
I'm sorry. I used to do this. This item is council proposing a new contract with Inland Environmental Resources to supply liquid mechanics and microsite to their facility that usually costs $500,000, $500,000 plus applicable taxes. And this is the second and final one-year renewal bid, 1455.
Item number nine is also going to be briefed by Mike, and it's a contract with Dundee Concrete and Landscaping.
Now, this one is council approval, the word at Dundee for removing all media for our biofilter at our facility here, but it costs $89,000 plus applicable taxes. This is announced this, this 15th, 2020, scheduled to begin after August 21st.
Council president?
Yes.
I'm having a hard time here.
Yep.
I don't know if, Laura, there's a really bad feedback.
Yeah. I don't know. Mike, can you try one more time and speak a little louder? And people have it on mute? If you, yeah.
Okay. Can you continue right now?
That's much better. Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Council approval for a contract with Dundee Concrete and Landscaping to remove and replace the old media for our biofilter at our facility for a cost of $89,200 plus applicable taxes. And scheduled to begin after August 21st, July 31st, 2020. Need anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 10 is a contract renewal number one with environmental control, and David Stockdale will brief.
Good afternoon, council president and council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Fires requesting your approval for the contract renewal for janitorial services at five of our fire department facilities. This is a one-year renewal, and the amount is $50,880. The contract renewal will go for one year. We'd have the option to renew it for an additional year. And nothing further pending your questions.
No. I don't see any. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 11 is a public assistance grant agreement, and Sally Strofer will give us the brief.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. The item that I have in front of me today is a contract with the Washington Military Department, which is the state agency that manages and facilitates federal FEMA funding. This is a revenue contract, which will allow for reimbursement of allowable expenditures related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Item number 12 will be considered separately. Item number 13A is claims, payments and warrants from the mayor. And B is claims and payments from the previous council agenda. And item C is payroll. Item number 14, the council minutes for, it looks like, three council meetings that we've had since we last met to approve.
All right. With that, Madam Clerk, if you want to read the consent agenda, less item 6B and item 12.
Okay. Reports, contracts and claims. Number one, purchase from Timeco Incorporated of Timeco Air Street Sweeper for the street department using HGAC contract SW04-20, $332,650.51, including tax. Number two, value blanket amendment with Wingfoot Spokane/Washington to purchase miscellaneous tires, increase of $105,000. Number three, value blanket increase with Hotsi of Spokane, Spokane/Washington to maintain the pressure washing equipment at Fleet Services. Annual increase $25,000. Total annual expenditure $95,000. Number four, value blanket renewal with Hitachi Zosen Norcross Georgia for the purchase of feeder and grate parts for the Waste Energy Facility from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, $250,000. Item number five, contract with Applied Industrial Technologies Spokane/Washington for the as-needed purchase and installation of the Grizzly conveyor feed belt at the Waste Energy Facility from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2022, $120,000 annually excluding taxes. Item number 6A, low bid award of inland asphalt company Spokane/Washington for the 2020 residential grind and overlay, $1,166,000. An administrative reserve of $116,600, which is 10% of the contract price will be set aside. Item 6B will be taken separately. Item number seven, contract with H2E Incorporated Liberty Lake/Washington for electrical engineering services to upgrade the Hoffmanwell electrical distribution system, $64,679. Number eight, contract renewal with Inland Environmental Resources Incorporated Pasco/Washington to supply magnesium hydroxide to Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility for effluent pH adjustment, $511,500 plus applicable tax estimated annual cost. Item number nine, contract with Dundee Concrete and Landscaping LLC Spokane/Washington to remove and replace the old media for the biofilter at the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility, $89,200 plus applicable tax. Item number 10, contract renewal number one with environment control of Spokane, Spokane/Washington to perform public works janitorial work at various facilities from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, $50,880. Number 11, public assistance grant agreement to allow reimbursement of allowable COVID-related response expenses from the Federal Emergency Management Agency passed through the Washington Military Department. Item number 12 will be considered during the legislative portion of the meeting. Item number 13, report of the mayor of Penning A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through May 8, 2020. Total $10,934,788.90 with Parks and Library claims approved by respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $10,240,039.96. 13B, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through May 22, 2020. Total $12,438,104.12 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $11,136,058.62. See payroll claims of previously approved obligations through May 16, 2020, $6,948,438.44. Item number 14, city council meeting minutes for May 11, May 14, May 18 and May 21, 2020.
All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right. Those items are approved. There's a request to take item 6B separately. Any further?
I'd like to hear the brief.
Yep.
Skip it.
Yep. Well, we kind of had it at committee, but we can have anything else?
We did, but we.
Yeah, that's fine.
It was also briefed in May.
Yeah.
We briefed it in May.
Do you want me to read it really quick?
Well, go ahead and read it, and then I'll ask if there's any further.
Okay.
Presentation.
6B La Riviera Incorporated, Roethrum, Idaho for Kempida-Woodridge Transmission Main, $237,327.95 plus tax, an administrative reserve of $23,732.80 plus tax, which is 10% of the contract will be set aside, deferred from May 18, 2020 agenda.
And I'll, just to be clear, I'll be giving anyone a chance who wants to talk on it. I mean, not that I'm giving it to you, but I'll make sure that space is there for people. But first, anything further from administration on this?
No, the administration is highly supportive of this project, believes it's the best option for everyone. We've had extensive discussions on it. We'll continue to have those discussions. Administration believes it's ready, but if we need to wait a week and do a little more homework, we are only too happy to do that.
Other comments? Is there anyone? Council member Cathcart and then council member Mum after that.
Yeah, just a, first I comment and say I, I'm going to support this today. My assumption is that it's probably going to get turned, I could be wrong on that. But it, but my question for the, if it does get turned down, then what is the process ahead for the project?
Well, we'd like to obviously see it. If we need to do some more homework, we'd like to provide that, continue to see this project move forward. If the council were to vote this project down, we would go back and look at what were the reasons council had for voting it down, address those, and then rebid the project and hope that we can get bids as low as we had last time. There are other options we presented.
There are other options, we presented the alternative project to you and those expenses look like. Undoubtedly, there are measures in between the two that could be examined. There is a timeframe and a developer, private owner, that we are, currently have proposed the partnership with, that could go away if our, if we reject this project, and that would obviously increase our expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, I think we can look at other alternatives that would save the ratepayers' money and get to some of the objectives of protecting the environment and doing kind of a Goldilocks, what is just right for what we need. So I would like to propose that we table this indefinitely, and that would give us time to work on those alternatives and come up with something that really protects the water system as a whole and ensures that this is done correctly and make sure that everyone's needs are addressed. That's a motion to table indefinitely.
Yep, that's a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table indefinitely. I have a question for Wes. There was discussion today at committee about the developer is required as a condition to put in a main, but only currently required to put in an eight-inch wide main, and the water department has determined that a 12-inch would be much better. And I'm just wondering if there's any possibility of talking to the developer about them paying the base amount for the eight, the city upping the 12, and maybe even the city taking some of the savings to do some of the mitigation type of ideas.
In a normal situation, that would be a little more typical. Developer has to do size X, we upgrade, pay the delta, decide Y. In this situation, it's a little different in that we're on private property. So our water department, and again, in my mind, very creatively and professionally created an opportunity for the city to benefit in getting the 12-inch main in, and the developer receives a benefit by giving us the access and the right-of-way with no cost, the easement, which normally is quite an expense. There might be different ways to structure that deal, but that was the deal that we entered into, and that has been bid. And again, the administration feels pretty strongly about it, maybe just on a, if we wanted to delay this for a week, administration would support that. I think if there's specific concerns, we can come back with that. If the deal in its concept is not acceptable to council, then we have to rethink everything and start over. I would say that our water department is led by extremely professional men and women, that they have expertise, and they created this deal. Our legal counsel has reviewed and has also endorsed the deal, and the administration has provoked, you know, proposed this deal as what is, in our minds, best for the citizens, best for the ratepayers, address safety, health, and efficiency concerns and conservation. I've got 29 years, 28 years, in doing city administration and city council work in local governments, and you learn a few lessons. And one of the most important principles I've always tried to live by and have seen it work and fail is that you never go on land use, never go against the advice of the experts. That entails risk, and that entails things that may not work out as well financially for us. So the administration is very committed to this project as presented. If council, that's council's prerogative to go up or down, and if council votes no, then we will find a different way to skin the cat.
Other comments or questions on the motion to table indefinitely?
Council President.
Councilmember Mum.
Yes, this is not a yes or no on the bid. This is tabling the bid indefinitely, which gives us some flexibility. This is not on the project, this is on the bid. And this is not a land use decision. This is on the bid itself, and if the city in some way made a deal like this, I am not seeing it in the engineer file. And in fact, it's very clear in the hearing examiner's decisions that that is not the deal, and that the engineers did not make that commitment. And so that is part of the conflict, that the documents that were presented to us show very differently of what our obligation is. So I'd like to have an opportunity to work off the line and come up with alternatives that satisfy all stakeholders. Thank you.
Important for council to just keep in mind that the bids are only good for so many days. I'm not sure when this bid will expire, but if we wait too long, we will be starting over again, whether it's this format or a different format. But waiting could kill this agreement and this bid.
And I can't see, Councilmember Wilkerson, if you're raising your hand or not, but...
Yes, I was, thank you, Council President.
Yep.
So my comment, I'm going to mention is, we've been briefed on this for weeks. Every briefing, another question comes up, and there's always a unanswered question going forward. So I support, Councilmember Mum, that we can do our homework a little bit better, in addition with the developer. So, too many questions to make a decision for me right now.
Councilmember Stratton.
I again will go back to my comments regarding the residents in our district, Councilmember Mum's district and my district. There are concerns. We have had people weighing in, wanting to know everything from what was going on to how it's going to affect them, their neighborhood, the environment. And I would take some time to be able to craft something communicative to them. So I'm standing with my neighbors and the residents in Indian Trail and Five Mile, and I think that we need to stop and take a look at this and rethink it, because it's obvious that there's a lot of questions and concerns in that area. So I'm going to support the amendment for the motion.
Other council members? All right, I'm just going to comment. It seems to me like there is a way forward on it, but we have not landed on it yet. I, again, I looked at the hearing examiner ruling where it was argued by the developer that the city was required to pay and perform this, and our legal team told the hearing examiner that the water system worked fine without it, and it wasn't needed. I talked to the water department, and they didn't necessarily agree with what our lawyers said about that, but that is what we said in a contested hearing, and I think we're in some ways stuck with that. But if I understand correctly, the developer can build the water transmission line, but would build it for eight inches instead of 12. It's not required currently to 12. I'm not sure if it could be changed to be required. But it seems like between the environmental mitigation and who should pay for this, there are some questions that need to be answered. I think if, there's nothing in here that prevents the developer from building the water line that they want, seems like there is a, and they would have to put it on their own property if they did it, so I don't see that as a, something they're giving up of value. But I think there is the potential of figuring out what it would cost from eight inches to 12, the city paying that extra four inches per foot, per pipe, so that we get more bang for our buck in terms of what the change is, and then also potentially contributing to mitigation that is probably not required legally, but would be really good for the neighborhood. So I, to me, there's a way forward if the developer is really interested in getting it done in the near future. But I'm going to support the motion to defer or to table it until we get those answers figured out and a chance to talk with the developer about it, or the developer's attorneys. Any other questions, comments? I'm going to do a roll call, vote on the motion to table. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President, it's an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
I didn't...
Was that an aye?
Was that an aye or a nay?
Nay.
Nay, okay, sorry, thought so. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, so the matter's deferred. I think City Administrator Craig O's words, though, are well-taken, that if there is going to be some new agreement, it should be done quickly, otherwise we'll lose the benefit of this bid, although hard to know what comes forward. All right, thanks, everyone, and I want to thank City Administrator Craig O for really putting together a really good presentation today earlier and making the case, I think, the strongest that could be made, given what the material you had, and it brought new insights to it, at least to me, in terms of the alternative cost, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll put the grant agreement to the legislative session before we go there. Councilmember Kinnear, I don't know if you wanted to give us a summary of public safety today. I probably didn't give you a heads-up, so I don't know if you have anything written out, but if there's anything you want to share with the audience about that.
You know, I don't have anything, but what I will say is, we had an extensive presentation and Q and A about what I could dance with Chief Midal. And the conversation brought more questions, so I did ask council to send their questions to Jacobi, my assistant, so that he could put them in a format for the chief. And I think once we get those answers, they should be posted for the community to see, because I am getting email asking the same questions that I have, and we just didn't have enough time to dig in and answer a lot of them. So we would like council members, please, send your questions to Jacobi and Henry Lee if he could suggest a format that people could accept those answers. I think that would be great for our community.
Also, I just wanted to add, already, some people who are watching that have already started emailing in questions that they hope we ask the chief. So if you're watching, if you're watching right now as a community member and you have questions, you would like us to ask the chief, please email us, and we'll get those questions asked to the chief. And he, I will say, so far, even on a very short amount of sleep, has been answering lots of our questions all day. Appreciate that. All right, so the next issue I have then on the, is going back to item 12, the grant agreement, if you want to read that.
Yep. Item number 12, grant agreement to enable community-minded enterprises to continue to provide vital community programming which the city believes is in the public interest, $160,000 for 2020.
And I don't know, Mr. McClatchy, are you prepared to talk about that, or you want me to talk about it? Yeah?
Either way.
Why don't you start with it? Yep.
So this is a grant of $160,000.
We can't hear you.
You can now, we can now, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So this is a one-time, $160,000 grant for operations for community-minded enterprises to help them build some capacity. In the past, over the past decade, the city has allocated about a half a million dollars in capital funding from a source that is different from the funding that council's considering now, but they've never received any operational grants. Council adopted this as a budget item in the 2020 budget, and there is a grant agreement before you today, but not a special budget ordinance, because the funds are already appropriated.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add on, I supported this during the budget process. So well over 10 years ago, the city used to run its own public access, and we had to use our staff to run public access, and we got out of the business by contracting with community-minded enterprises. But I don't know what we did at the beginning, but since then, we have not actually given them any funds to operate it. So they are providing a essential municipal service for us, but without any budget support for the actual operations. They do get capital funds from our cable franchise agreement with Comcast, so they have really good equipment, but if they don't have money to pay staff, it's not doing the public much good to do their public access, and they do a terrific job. I'm hoping this is just a one-year bridge from the general fund dollars, because we're going to have a new cable provider that will have some taxes coming in from that. And then I'm hoping that we can take those additional taxes and add that to their operations in future years. We don't, we don't have that yet, but I'm hoping by the time of the next budget. So that's what this is about. But other questions, comments?
Councilmember Burke.
And then Councilmember Cathcart. Yep.
Well, I just had a quick thing. I think that was the intention, was for them just to use this one-time budget allocation and then move it, as they're able to gain some momentum through other funding sources, they would then not be able, not be taking any of this money from us. So that's what I got from the board and the staff. So I just wanted to reiterate that that's the direction that they're hoping to go.
Councilmember Cathcart. Mike? Councilmember Cathcart, yeah.
Yeah. I guess the reason I just wanted to bring forward the consent agenda is, I really feel that, so it's general small amounts of just the other expenditures that we have, at the time when we've got, we've got $13 million protected short haul, we've got to try to set up right now just to make sure that these services don't have to get cut this year. I just really, anything that's not essential to health and safety or to essential operation really, at this point, and perhaps reconsider. I really appreciate the fact that they operate our Channel 14. Right now, it's just not the time, it's not truly essential.
Thank you. Other council members? I'm just going to make one more plug for it. When we thought about it this last fall, of course, we weren't in the current COVID situation, but it seemed to me, based on my understanding of their finances, that this whole enterprise of the community-minded television would probably go away without this, and we made that. And to me, all the money we've invested, and all the people and the community time, even though it's $160,000, it would be a shame to just see that go away, and it didn't seem like there's any way to sustain it. So that's why I was a strong proponent for the budget, and it's taken us this long as a city to get this money allocated. If it had been more timely, it would have been allocated before the COVID situation, so I don't think they should bear the price for that. But that's just me. If there's no other comments, I will take a roll call vote on that. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President, it's an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart. I didn't, I didn't hear you, Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Nay, okay, thank you. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes. Again, appreciate your comments, Councilmember Cathcart, and thanks for advancing it on the agenda. That brings us to our first emergency ordinance. If you want to read that.
5910 of the City of Spokane, Washington, providing for the issuance and sale of a limited tax general obligation refunding bond of the city in the principal amount of not to exceed $22 million for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the city, providing for the redemption of the outstanding bonds to be refunded, providing for the annual levy of taxes to pay the principal of and interest on the bond, and declaring an emergency.
All right, and as, we've got several related kinds of financial matters, but I'm wondering if someone, perhaps CFO Wallace, wants to just explain this specific one.
Thank you, City Councilmembers. Yes, the next four items on your agenda are all really related. The first ordinance is related to the refunding of the 2010B street bonds, and with this refunding... refunding, what it will do is lock in interest rate lock whereby after December 1st, we would refund these bonds and recognize significant savings, savings in excess of 16% and net present value of $3.5 million. So that's a very, very good return. Um, the next three items are also an emergency ordinance and then two resolutions that refinance and/or restructure several, um, Spokane investment pool loans, um, a lot for the same reasons, to either recognize cash savings for 2020, but also for significant interest rate savings on these loans.
And on the, the first one, 35910, uh, that's going to be the, the same, or a shorter repayment period as well? What's the, just a reminder of that?
That is, that is correct, Council President. That actually shortens the term by four years, so that it is only a six-year term.
All right, great. All right, so let's take that one, since that's quite distinct from the other ones, and other comments or questions from council members on the refinancing of the 2010B street bonds? All right, I'm not seeing any, so, uh, all those, well, I guess we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Councilmember Mum, air, I mean, aye or nay? Aye. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. And...
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, that brings us to the next ordinance, 35911, um, which is a SIP loan ordinance. Do you want to read that? Go ahead.
Ordinance C 35911 of the City of Spokane, Washington, providing for the issuance and sale of a limited tax general obligation refunding bond in the principal amount of not to exceed $4,68,985, to provide funds to refund the city's outstanding limited tax general obligation and refunding bond, Series 2016, fixing the date for maturity, interest rate, terms, and covenants of the bond, authorizing the sale and delivery of the bond to the city, declaring an emergency, and providing for other matters properly, properly relating there, too, relates to an interfund loan from the Spokane Investment Pool to the Asset Management Fund.
Uh, Councilmember Mum.
Hi, uh, I, I sponsored this, and I, I know Tanya had some information about what it would look like in terms of closing costs on those SIP loans if we deferred it or did it differently. So, Tanya, would you like to, um, explain that to the whole council?
Um, well, yes, I guess it, that was in response to, if we were to postpone this for two weeks, we would most likely have to take a look at whether we'd have additional costs in, um, terms of redoing some of the documentation and updating that, so that is a possibility. I don't anticipate that that would be a large sum of money, but we just need to recognize that there would be some additional administrative costs involved. Um, but with a postponement beyond June 1st, there would definitely be the accrual of interest until the effective date of any refinancing that we do on the SIP loans. So far, everything that we've presented to you in our committee workshop and otherwise has had a targeted effective date of June 1st.
Understand, and I, I want to thank you for that, and I also know that there's been some discussions, and it has been delayed because we had another event, uh, happening, and maybe council didn't have the time to fully digest all of the, the new calculations in looking at whether or not we should be using, um, capital lift funding for operations, and I think there were some, uh, on the council who wanted to discuss that.
Yeah, I just, I'm not, I've been a little, um, hazy on this from when it was filed, because my understanding is there's supposed to be some type of, I think there are three different amortizations for each one, uh, whether we just do straight payment at the lower interest, or whether we, uh, try to avoid some payments in 2020, uh, and then make them up later. Um, so I don't, did we get sent those amortization pages? I don't...
Um, they should have been sent to you last week. Um, I can, if I can share with my screen, I can just give you a summary of the different options, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, well, what I'm, I, okay, why don't you start with that?
Let me try to share. Can you all see this okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we have, um, presented a lot of information to all of the council, and we certainly understand that that can be overwhelming at times, and probably did not give us all the adequate time to really walk through all of this. Um, certainly, this first option, um, is what staff looked at to start with, as what if we restructured the principal and maintained the same term, so that the, all the SIP loans matured as originally anticipated, uh, but restructured the principal so that we front-loaded the savings. The intent was, primary goal of debt preserve, is much general fund cash in years 2020 and 2021, to help address the COVID-19 loss of revenue that we're going to realize in 2020. Option two was if we extend the public safety loans, uh, just one year, and restructure the principal also, so that we could recognize as much cash savings in 2020 and 2021. And then option three was another option that was asked for consideration, which was just do a regular refunding, which means we don't restructure the principal, we maintain the terms, um, it's very regular. As you can see, with the net present value of savings, all three scenarios are nearly identical. So they're all three getting, regardless of which scenario, there is going to be a net present savings of almost 2.6 million. It's just a matter of how we structure and the term. Net percent of savings, 5.45%, again, nearly the same regardless of the option that is selected. Um, usually, 5% is where we even give consideration to refinance. This was just a little bit more than that. So it's worth considering, um, but there's a lot more advantage depending on how you restructure and if you change the term. So it's killing two birds with one stone. You can have 2020 cash savings, and that's where the big difference lies in these different options. But there's not a bad option, but option two is the one that staff had suggested because of the significant cash savings that could be realized in 2020, um, to address the impacts that we're going to see because of COVID, and still take advantage of those low interest rates.
And can you describe what the change of the interest rate is going to be in all three options?
The, uh, let, I'd have to look at the... I apologize, I'm not recalling the original interest rate. I am recalling that we will drop this down to 0.8, about 0.86, depending on the closing date. We end up pricing the new debt based on the closing date.
Okay. And I guess my question, if we don't make a significant payment in 2020 on option one, it's hard for me to understand why there would only be an $8 difference if we're getting a lower interest rate on the net present value savings.
The net present value takes into account the time value of money, obviously, so that's where here, we did extend it by a year, but we also adjusted the principal. So we push the principal out, which means we're going to have a little more interest that we're going to pay upfront by pushing the interest out.
Yeah, I guess if, and I don't know how much, I mean, what's your estimate of how much interest savings at, at an annual rate? So it's going to be 0.86, what's it around right now?
Give me just a quick sec.
Tanya, this is, this is Ryan.
Oh, yes, Ryan.
So it, it should be noted that each of these were issued at different times, and so each of these different issues have different rates that are currently holding. Um, and so there's, there's 19 different issues that are included in this refunding, and so each one of them would have a, have their original rates and be, it ranges quite a bit from issue to issue.
Sure.
Uh, right now, we ran these numbers at 0.86% as the savings. We've actually seen a decline in the treasury rate since then, and as of today, the treasury rate is, uh, is five basis points lower, um, so we're looking at, uh, 31 basis points for the treasury rate, plus the 50 basis points of the administration fee. We're looking at really a, a 0.81 as of today.
All right, I, okay. So I get that there's not going to be a set, but it seems like if you're going to be lowering the interest rate between option one and option three, there should be a bigger savings than $8. And I'm just not sure what, how that calculation changes.
The, the cash savings will show differently than the net present value savings.
Okay.
Um, because the cash savings shows a year by year, so there certainly would be a difference between option one and option, option three on the cash savings, but taking into the time value of money, uh, the net present value savings actually, uh, pretty consistent through all three scenarios.
So what would the, what would you expect the cash savings for a year to be, um, on this, on these lower interest rates across the board?
Um, so in option one, we have, uh, we've front-loaded a lot of that, the savings, right? So we, in the, in the first year, we're, in option one, we're going to see a, uh, yearly savings in 2020 is going to be 1.8 million about, and option two is going to be 6 million, and in option three, it's going to be 240,000. And option three, because we have a uniformed savings throughout the life of the, of the loan, we're seeing essentially a, a significantly less savings per, I guess, in, in the front portion of this per year, but overall, you'll see very similar savings throughout the total of the, uh, that you'd see in every single year as we show through. I don't know if it's easy to, but I'd also be glad, I'm glad to show you my screen where you can show the breakdown per year, if that would be easiest.
That'd be great.
I was just bringing that up, thank you, Ryan. Yes, that's it.
Okay. So in option one, you'll obviously see the savings of just the, you know, in the, in the first two, in the first three years. In option two, you see higher savings in the first year, but because we pushed off the debt service on some of the, uh, public and safety pieces, you, we have having to kind of eat that back up in a couple later years. On option three, we have this uniform savings for outstanding, uh, principal and interest that would be going through the life of, of the bonds. Whereas, what we really focused on was the general fund, uh, because in option one, we only get a little bit, even less than a million dollars in the general fund relief in option 2020 for option one, but in option two, we open that up to about 5.1 million, whereas in option three, we're, the, the relief or the, the flexibility that you would have is only 111,000. And the, the way the resolution, the way the authorization is written, is that if the money is available and you still would like to pay off these bonds early, you certainly could, at no penalty. So all we're doing is creating an option for the city to be able to have that flexibility going forward, um, without, you know, without, essentially giving as much flexibility you can over the next couple of years, and, you know, certainly, if the city is able to, they can certainly pay down as if they would in option three, even if they're doing it in, in option one or option two.
So if I'm looking at this chart, the one on the left, all SIP loans, that accumulates the savings under each option, and so we, at the bottom, the bottom of each column, that's what the savings are under each option in terms of cash. Is that fair to say?
Correct, so the cash savings is at the bottom, correct, of each of those.
Okay. And, so have we, this would be a question for either of you. I haven't, the last I heard, we had $61 million in reserves, and I haven't heard any reports that we're in danger of, um, going through those, so I'm just wondering, um, how we're balancing, uh, saving more money in the option three versus, uh, the need to basically kind of pay some operating expenses with, um, one-time funds, which we've tried to avoid doing the last several years.
Um, well, thank you, Council President. We have been reporting the balance of the reserves in our monthly report. There's about 19 million of unappropriated reserves. The rest of your reserves are in the contingency account, or the revenue stabilization account, or they are restricted for other uses, that we would not be able to use them for other purposes. So when you look at the 19 million, if we do nothing else this fiscal year, we will most likely burn through most or all of that 19 million to face COVID and those revenue losses, those costs. But we have been trying to mitigate and preserve that, because we also know that revenue is not going to be in full recovery for 2021. Um, and so if that is the case, and that is, that is fine, too, we do have a lot of flexibility, but we are going to burn through quite a bit of those if we do not do anything to mitigate. And then we will also have 2021 to face, and how much of the reserves are we comfortable spending into, because by 2021, we will most likely be into our contingency reserves if we've done nothing in 2020 to mitigate revenue losses. Um, and then I am not sure what the, the policy is for the city to replenish reserves once you start into your contingency or your revenue stabilization reserve. But in the longer-term perspective, that will mean that we will have to have some strategy or plan in place to replenish any of the contingency or revenue stabilization reserves that we do use. So there's going to be just that much less that we get to allocate, um, on the expenditure side of the equation for other purposes. So it is, it's always best practice to take advantage of these rare opportunities, and like I said, you can't go wrong with any option. Any option that you select will result in savings. It's a matter of how much savings do you want for 2020, which is going to be our worst year, and we really don't know what 2021 or 2022 holds for us.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, why do we skip 2023 under option two?
It's not, it's not skipped, it just happens to be the same debt services you would have, so you just don't see any savings there.
I, oh, okay, I see, thank you.
Yeah. Um, you had, you've sent me once, Tanya, the cost of doing, uh, refi of these SIP loans, and my recollection was it was not a large number compared to the bond refinance that we're doing. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that is fair to say. Um, certainly, the SIP loans are internal, so we have a little more control over those.
Because I'm just, it, to me, there's a lot of questions. Option three has, saves us more money, doesn't, um, spend one-time money on our Option three has, saves us more money, doesn't spend one-time money on operations, and yet, I'm assuming that at some point, at the end of the year, if we're getting ready for 2021, if we're in a thing, that we could look at doing something like this that would change the payment schedules if we needed to do that. But it would just, it would cost us the cost to do it.
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Mum.
Would you like another opportunity to discuss this at a study session or on our finance committee? And I could make a motion to defer until the 15th of June, or what is your preference here?
Well, that's, I would appreciate that, because I'm, I feel like we are sort of just having a debate, and we might not have all, we're just still absorbing all the fine details of it, so.
I'll make that motion for consideration of Council President, that we defer until June 15th, and I'll place it on the earliest available study session of committee meeting for further discussion and understanding.
And that's for?
I'll second.
Okay. And just to be clear, that's for our ordinance 35911 and resolution 33 and resolution 34. They're all?
If that's all the SIP loans?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Great. And I just want to thank Tanya and her team for being so responsive and understanding that we have a lot of competing issues for our time right now. And I know you've turned it around and given us everything you could as quickly as you could, and we're just trying to do our best job here.
I completely understand.
Thank you.
Any discussion about the motion to defer till June 15th? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed name? Abstentions? Okay. Deferred to June 15th, and we will work on getting it on another study session before that, since we have lots of other cost-saving ideas, I think, also for that finance committee meeting coming up. All right. That brings us, I believe, to the, and also, I just wanted to extend my thanks to Tanya and her team and consultants as well for getting us a good turnaround on lots of complex financial data and educating us on this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. And next is the fire hydrant ordinance.
Resolution 2020-0035 regarding the City of Spokane Water and Hydroelectric Department Public Rule and Policy, Water, Hydrant, Usage Policy and Fees.
And I'm going to toss that to Mr. Crago.
Yeah, I think before we get a brief on this, Dan Kegley is right here, and Dan's been with the city for 29 years now. This will be his final act as, or at least nearly final act. I think he's probably got a few left on his desk, but at least in a public action in his last briefing with the city council. Just on a personal note, as Dan retires, I'm kind of sad. I just got to know Dan, and then Dan is leaving us. In a short time I've known him, he's been eminently wise, extremely personable and well-liked by his colleagues and a true professional. And so just on behalf of the mayor, the administration, and the city council, Dan, I just want to wish you congratulations, Godspeed, and best wishes on behalf of all of us for the future. Thank you.
And I also just wanted to add my personal thanks to you, Dan. I'm expecting my certificate of water department procedure before you leave, because you have so educated me on so many things. Thank you so much. And I guess--
We'll hand off to you, Dan.
Yep.
All right. Well, I will thank you all for those kind words. 29 years goes by, and it went on high sometimes. So with that, it gives me great pleasure to, as my final act, to provide some health and safety to the citizens of Spokane. This resolution is really in partnership with the ordinance passed in January. This being a public rule also needs to be passed in concurrence by city council through resolution to support that public rule, so that we can actively purpose the ordinance and monitor and enforce the ordinance as such. So this resolution does just that, and since it does, as I mentioned, impact the public rather than just city operations, it asks for concurrence to a resolution by the city council. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Also, I just wanted to think, on the substance of this, I really think the water department went above and beyond in working with the community and figuring out a system that would work, so thanks for doing that. We'll take a roll call on the resolution. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President's an aye. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Again, thank you, Mr. Kegley, so much.
Thank you, and that's the way you go out on a seven oh vote.
Yep. All right. Next up on our agenda is an ordinance on homelessness. If you want to read the title, I've got some suggestions for moving forward on it.
Okay. Ordinance C 35908, Establishing Official City Policy Relating to Homelessness Response Efforts and Acting in New Section 18.05.030 to the Spokane Municipal Code.
And as I emailed everyone last night and then followed up with a document today, when we first filed this ordinance, there was some risk of whether the night-by-night shelters would stay at the same capacity. That has been resolved for at least another 75 days, so it's no longer as urgent. And we have heard from our community housing and human services board that they would like a chance to weigh in, and we also heard from the regional continuum of care board that they would like a chance to weigh in. And that makes sense to me, as I've explained to them, the immediate emergency is gone. We've also had, I've had some feedback from Councilmember Wilkerson, from city administration staff, and so I revised the current version, and my request will be a motion to substitute the version that I circulated earlier today, and then a motion after that to defer it to June 22nd to give those folks a chance to weigh in. I know the CHHS board is having a special notice meeting this week about it. So I'd invite a motion to substitute the version.
I'll make a motion to substitute for the new version.
Okay. Sir, second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to substitute? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Next, I'd invite a motion to defer to June 22nd.
Motion to defer to June 22nd?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed name? Abstentions? Okay, that's deferred to the 22nd. And then, the last thing I have on my list was a resolution in response to the death of George Floyd. And I don't know if that's Councilmember Kinnear, if you want to make a motion about that.
How do you want, I mean, we talked about it briefly, it's public safety.
So the--
How do you want to do it?
The question is whether there's an appetite to place it on tonight's agenda, would be the first.
And if, just to say, if we don't want to do it tonight, we could certainly put it in the queue for next week.
So I'll, I, I don't have an opinion on it. I don't know if people, so someone needs to make a motion to get the conversation started of either one, either tonight or tomorrow. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to move this to tonight's agenda, or today's agenda.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I need to do a motion to suspend the rules first. So I will go, forget that motion. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. And a second? Do I hear--
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on suspending the rules? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed name? Abstentions? All right. The rules are suspended. Now, Councilmember Burke, you could renew your motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to give this a resolution tonight.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Motion and second to place the resolution that was circulated on tonight's agenda. Any discussion about that?
Yes.
Council President, can we verify which version resolution is being advanced?
The resolution that's being advanced is the one that the Council President, Councilmember Stratton, and you made changes to, so the latest one.
Number nine, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. All right. Yes, it's version nine. Councilmember Kinnear, you are going to speak to--
Yes, thank you. I think it's timely that we move this forward now. It covers a lot of things going forward that we'd like to see in truth. It's not just talking about what happened in the past, but how do we want to go forward to the community and address some of the things that we're seeing right now in our country. And certainly, we want to be proactive in how we deal with our police department and how our police department deals with the community. Certainly, the police department is making great strides, and some of us see that we have more work to do. So that's the essence of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I just feel that what a really good step we could take for our community to assure them that we see them, we hear them, and we're ready to look into policy changes that can better the community. So I am in full support of this. I think that the community is looking for leaders, and we can be those leaders. And this is the first step. By no means does this, you know, stop the momentum going forward, but I'm just really interested in looking deep into policies and really figuring out how we hold people accountable and how we make sure that our community is safe and protected in all of our communities. So I support this, and I think that it would be a good sign to our community that we're committed to working on it. And so thank you, Councilmember Kinnear, and the others who put in input to this.
Any, was that you, Councilmember Cathcart? Yes.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Kinnear for incorporating some of my suggestions into the resolution, and I probably agree with 95% of it, and I think it's, a lot of what's in there is very important, and so I will be supporting this.
Any other council, Councilmember Kinnear?
So I cannot let this go by without thanking my assistant, Jacobi, for doing the first draft and including all of your comments. He worked on it today, he started this morning and just got it done, so I want to give it a shout out as well.
Councilmember Mum? Was that you raising your hand?
Thank you. I just want to call out a couple important points that the vote in 2013 to have an independent investigation oversight was 70% a vote in favor within the city. And I also want to call out that the council does support the public service in police uniforms that work every day and work all weekend and are still working. And so we want, in no way for this to not show support. That's not what this is. This is support of our community and what our community wants. So I want to thank everyone for putting this together, and I look forward to working on these issues individually with all of you.
Other, Councilmember Wilkerson?
Second, Council President. Thank you, Lori, for this. I don't want to wait. People have been waiting already. That's where a lot of the anger is coming from. They're looking to us to lead, and that's why we are here, is to lead. We know there are lots of issues, but we need to start addressing them, and we need to make our statement and invite them in to help us find the solutions. So that's the community and our police department, so I support this.
Councilmember Stratton?
I'll be brief. Thanks to Lori and Jacobi for putting this together. Again, I want to thank Councilmember Wilkerson for her comments at the conference today. I was proud to have her represent council. Her words spoke loudly to me and meant a lot to me. I hope that this becomes the beginning point. No matter how many words we put together, we need action. And hopefully, this is the beginning, that we can talk about it all we want, but now we need to say it's time to act. It's time to bring people together to have the bigger discussion. So I am happy to support this. I'm happy to be part of the biggest discussion, and I'm happy to call Spokane my home, and I'm proud that we are able to hopefully 7-0 support this and move forward. Thanks.
Yeah. And again, we're having the vote. Actually, the vote, this vote is just to place it on the agenda. We've already gone to the substance, but I just want to be clear for everyone, just so you know. So all those in favor of placing it on today's agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed name? Okay, great. So now it's ready for a vote. Is there any more comment on the substance of the resolution? And I did just want to shout out, this is really council's statement about the events that's in parallel with the administration's events, and there's a lot of, I think, common ground, but it's council's opportunity to do that. I would just want to also thank everyone for the urgency and the unanimity about it. So many people have been working on these issues literally for their lifetimes, and in the last week, there's that feeling that we haven't gotten too far. I know that we have gotten somewhere. We have more to go. And the idea is that for our policing system to work for everybody, people in uniform, not in uniform, regardless of culture, race, gender, and the other way they identify themselves, that there's a system that seems and is fair. So thanks to everyone, and thanks for all the work. I'll do a quick roll call vote. Council--
Do you want me to read it in full first?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Please read it. Ms. Fister?
Resolution number 2020-36, a resolution affirming solidarity with communities of color across the country demanding police reform following the death of George Floyd, whereas the killing of George Floyd at the hands of Minneapolis police officers has reopened wounds of institutionalized racism and violence against people of color and has exposed serious, pervasive, and inexcusable flaws of implicit bias in our justice system and our public safety apparatus. And whereas we cannot turn away or deceive ourselves into believing that abuses like those that have happened to so many people around the country don't or can't happen in Spokane. And whereas Spokane police officers, just like elected officials and all other city employees, serve the public, not the other way around. And whereas the City of Spokane, like every other level of government in our country, plays a vital role in safeguarding liberty and justice for all, not just for some. And whereas, as such, it is important that the City of Spokane Police Department continue to prioritize and enhance implicit bias and de-escalation training programs. And whereas, when police recruits come from an armed services background, there may, in some cases, need to be added emphasis on re-acclimating them to civilian-style interactions, including the peace officer model necessary for effective, modern-day policing. And whereas, the highest degree of public accountability and transparency is necessary when investigating allegations of officer misconduct, officer-involved shootings, and other uses of force against community members. And whereas, not only must the underlying facts and circumstances of each use of force be made public and investigated in a transparent way, but the public's trust, respect, and confidence in all our public servants must be safeguarded. And whereas, while it can be extremely difficult to assess the full measure of the circumstances in an individual case of alleged misconduct, it is impossible to perform if there is no ability for an independent outside civilian reviewing agency to conduct full, independent, impartial investigations into the facts of each allegation and publish their findings. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spokane City Council absolutely supports the firing and prosecution of the Minneapolis police officers involved in the murder of George Floyd. Be it also resolved that it is the right of the people of Spokane to have the benefit of a fully independent and transparent office of the police ombudsman to provide oversight and review, including the conduct of fully independent investigations and published findings. In all alleged cases of police misconduct or improper use of force, as was authorized and required by the voters overwhelmingly in 2013, with nearly 70% of the vote in support. Be it also resolved that the Spokane City Council-- Be it also resolved that the Spokane City Council absolutely supports and stands behind the public service, servants in police uniform who keep us safe every day by de-escalating conflict, putting into practice a guardian, rather than a warrior mentality, and by helping to ensure the safety of all people in Spokane. Be it also resolved that the Spokane City Council absolutely supports the City of Spokane Police Department's current efforts to implement implicit bias training and de-escalation training, and encourages SBD to invest substantially more time and resources to implicit bias training and de-escalation strategies, as it is critical to ensuring that the use of force is a last resort. Be it also resolved that the Spokane City Council absolutely supports a community and neighborhood policing model. Be it also resolved that the Spokane City Council supports updating Spokane's laws and policies regarding use of force to properly classify tactics and strategies that can result in the death of those restrained by law enforcement as deadly force, and properly train and supervise officers, so that future in custody deaths are reduced in our community. Be it also resolved that the Spokane City Council absolutely supports local criminal justice system reform that encompasses current best practices for pre-trial community supervision, just bail, just bail, civil asset forfeiture, and racially equitable sentencing. And be it finally resolved that the Spokane City Council absolutely stands with, supports, mourns with, and grieves with the families of loved ones of those who have lost their lives due to unjust interactions between community members and their police officers all over the country, regardless of their circumstances, past actions, associations, race, immigration status, religion, or gender. I'm sorry.
It's just that it should be resolution 37.
Oh, 37, gotcha. Oh, gotcha, thank you. Excuse me, this is resolution 2020-37, not 36.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson, for the amen. And any other comments before a roll call vote? All right. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Amen and yea.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President is an amen and an aye as well. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Okay. Passed as unanimously, seven to zero. Believe that's the last thing I have on our agenda for consideration today. Thanks, everyone, for your work. I also want to add an extra commendation to the administration for all the work over difficult times in the last few hours and days, and our public servants in uniform and not in uniform, and our community members who are standing up for peace and justice in a united Spokane. With that, we're adjourned.